We're gonna do it right now. We'll give you time to read them. We have a second and final proposal, thank you.
He was chair. My name is Jeff Vasidov. In our pre discussion, we exist conditions. With the hospital, come at point out some conditions that are important in terms of project and. This is the experience. Our school's home window is tax back. More left. On to the thirteen. This white. Area is the hospital. Hot areas here and here. Presently located roughly here. The access to the hospital, which is off her street. Here. This entrance. And also turning up off of Somerset Street. Plan. There. And the third access to the hospital is Spruce Street with a public right of way. Obviously. Who's that building around? Down. Here. The science care drive by a large visitor outpatient nurse. Front of the building. Right entrance down. Populations. Yep, it's access present this side here. There's an hop boat for the ambulance to come in. Pull up, back in. Three point turn to back out. Through the building has many service features, generator, air chillers. There's two office buildings up here. There's some parking behind the building in this area and there's parking that's usually intended for staff and some outpatient here in this area is also. Right there. The site has great screening, existing screen of force along the property lines. Here. Here. This side. The hospital has a helipad. Here dedicated access for the paved access from the helipad down. And crosswalk right there that the ambulance entrance doubles as the access into the hospital for. Once again, the front entrance is characterized by this drop off. Enter. Area right here, we can bolt to the curb, let somebody off. We'll see a photograph shortly of a structure that covers some of the revolted weatherproof to allow people to move to their front door. And then move out again and find parking and the ADA parking for front door at the moment is over here in this bank of parking. This is in the neighborhood commercials of the Tennessee. But. This is the plan that's in your packets. Identified CD one on one existing conditions and demolition plan. Let's pull back to the scale and give you a better perspective of the site. Yeah, heavy line that goes long dash dash is the property line. And I'll briefly start up here, there's the helipad, in fact, it's the same orientation as the photograph. The problem line moves along here. That's a jog meet to offer street, we have frontage here. Jogs around the private loan block, dog around private loan lot, picks up on Somerset Street, frontage here, here. Comes back, lose this building, comes down to this corner, runs along here, past Bruce and goes up through there. There are no property line or property adjustments for both of us. What's useful about this project as well, the sub view, is this light shading here is intended to be the approximate limits of the work of the site work and also the building work. And so, starting up here, crossing over the corner of the building is. This area will be modified up here and around and back and down through here and then down this dry aisle roughly to Somerset Street where there's some are. Back by the little corner and then all this area here will be quantified or adjusted by. In terms of limitations, we're looking at trying to, the goal of the project, the best goals and lengths tonight, both to expand the ED. So. That was always to add more space to the building. Not necessarily accommodate more staff, we're trying to create more treatment rooms and more flexibility to the ED to be able to have bigger events and the more events once one patient. Limitations here because the rest of the hospital would require modifying interior to move the ED. So we tried to work with this area saying the ED stage here gets bigger, what are opportunities for additions? Working to this, this way is problematic to the West because there's bank here, there's a relatively high change rate. It's about. Four or five feet at this point and then it's just more like ten fifteen etcetera falling down coming around here. I also understand from the hospital staff that that is largely wrong, that'd be a hard way to go. We also really need to maintain a service drive around the hospital. For all the right reasons for emergency access to serve the hospital building. So if this moves over, we have to move the drive as well. Impact the helipad, a lot of moving parts going that way. Decision was made to put an addition on the hospital coming this way into the parking lot. That, that addition is going to take out drop off the front entrance. Provides that, that was part of the mission then. We have some impact of parking, that's part of the mission. And then lastly, we have an opportunity to improve the ambulance service, the hammerhead nature coming and backing is problematic. That meant expect this count at this point. So we had the opportunity to improve access to the front door, improve the ambulance movements and we're going to take the impacts of parking and site layout and try to find a way to solve that to make it still accommodate the hospital. This slide. There's some existing condition shots, I expect that folks in room are familiar, so I'll just run through again. This is the present main entrance of the hospital. It's also the emergency. Entrance, both the same entrance. There is a relatively modest waiting area just right inside the doors here with a couple counters inside to allow people to check in. That could, it's going to speak to the building later in our presentation, I will steal a little for thunder, just a little, and say that that waiting area does not be comparable in terms of people being in proximity, privacy. There are also a number of operational. Challenges, thank you, of, of having that. Different things gonna occur and they have limited opportunities to respond to different events and things happening upon it. So. The opportunity to move that entrance one and then two, make it more efficient and effective with a more defined, this is emergency, this is all other services, but it's part of the project. Also notice, you have the opportunity to pull up and let somebody out right here, but it's not weather covered from here to where you are in the car. But isn't really an all weather drop off? Slide please. And it's just turning to the right, this is the main entrance again and we've got this very, very fact in terms of the problem, the curve and the loop allows you to come in, make a move, go back out, park. This structure by some weather protection, it's not quite as effective to be again, doesn't extend out over where you're getting somebody out of the bar, you still have to go through the elements to get to the, to the end. Slide. And this is the, the third and final just edition slide, but this is a shot of the ambulance drop off. And there's several things here that are not effective to be, this crosswalks intend to be an access coming down from the flight to life. And this is the double doors that are there, that's a reflection in the door with the wall right there. However, you can get one ambulance in here, but there isn't really room for a second one without having to, you have two at the same time, you're not able to access this door efficiently from the second animal. You have this vacuum moving towards the book building, which can be problematic. There is no. Dedicated decon or other entrance to ED for emergency staff, if there's some situation, fluid, light fluids, that sort of thing, how is that addressed in that situation? You don't have that, you have a double door there going into the hallway and that's all, they're almost immediately into the ED and into the treatment areas. So the receiving portion of this is modest and it's probably not consistent with the ways that it can be done today. Slide. Site application itself, here we're going to start talking about someone proposed features, I will not go through every drawing, I'm going to rely pretty heavily on the site layout plan, CP one on one. Thank you. This is the whole plan and I pulled back to give you the full view of this, I will zoom in in a second and make this more detailed. If I can orient you again, this dark long line, two dashes, the property line, the hell pads up here. There's the property line coming down, there's that jog, there's a bunch along the poplar, around like this, comes around like this and around. The work area is roughly here, if you remember on the CD one on one. This is where the work is going to occur and here's the important part of this, this is the building addition itself, it's a heavy single line with some feet, some hatching on it. Coming out like this, around down here, over angled over here, back to here, to there, this is the building addition that was proposed for the project. In comparison, the previous main entrance was approximately here and this area of the building is actually going to be unchanged, well, the layout could be changed, there would be some renovation in there, but this is still the main entrance or main hallway into the remainder of all hospital services. This will be more dedicated to the ED, again, in fact, we'll talk about the interior layout once we go. With this addition, we have a main entrance here, I'll zoom in in a second, that allows you to enter the hospital one location and split left, left to the ED, right to all their services for visitation. We've provided a drop off that is more functional in terms of a drive in and pull out. And I didn't want to put in the jersey notes, these are called jug handles down there, someone referred to as that, but the, the way that we're going to access our front door is to allow us to move to the jug handle, come around, there's two full lanes here through traffic. This lane will allow you to put two, maybe even three vehicles dropping off under, under or near a portico, covered from weather. An extent over to the sidewalk here and allows you to have ADA parking right in front of the door now, to move the ADA spaces as close to the doors as possible can. We have good coverage here in terms of being a more weatherproof entry for everybody. If there's vehicles lined up along the curb, there's room for another vehicle, including up to a fire engine, to pass by and go by them if there was some need to do that. So we don't have any situation where we have. In this area below is having free lane or for movement there. The entrances to the site are unchanged, however, how the hospital views this is changed. From Somerset, we're going to take what was a one-way dry lot that went down like this. And make that a two-way path. When we walked the site last year, we observed most folks were going both ways anyhow. No reason, that's no reason to say it, that, that's an operational issue, but um. The point is that yes, really, you should be able to move in any direction around the hospital for all those reasons, all the traffic, nursing services, whoever's doing that, it's supposed to be.
I was just going to point out the address, but you know, that if you look at what the actual address of the hospital is doing.
This is the horrible entrance for the hospital, so by making this two-way, we're going to encourage people to come in Somerset. There's a second conversation to be had later night, though, provide some signage here to indicate the hospital going in there and we're not going to even discuss that signage, but the opportunity is here for this town to agree and allow there to be an H sign or some other dedicated, this is weight finding, enter the hospital here. If this became the primary entrance then, the traffic would come in, make this turn to be eternal signage saying ADA entrance this way, come up the drive and now you've got a great decision. You can go into the jug handle, drop off, you go straight ahead, park near the entrance here, you can go to ADA and park here, you can make a turn here and park in all the rest of the spaces that have been maintained, all in this area through here. But it's time to leave, they can go back out, go through Somerset, or they could come this way, turn and go to that pop, this is still a two-way drive here. However, we intend to sign this area, this limit, and this limit back here, perhaps back here, as authorized vehicles all. So we're trying to discourage the public from driving through that area, trying to limit the control, there will not be physical barriers, there'll just be a, a honest person, you know, please obey the signage. But to get to the most important part, we've taken the ambulance drop off and put it here. This rectangle represents a pier with three column or a porch, another portico. So we have a covered ambulance drop off, now the ambulance is going to enter from poplar, or from this side of town, from Spruce, come to the back of the ambulance or the hospital and line up either the other direction and there's a door that will take them into the ER right there, it's weather covered. It's also got a pass by lane here, if there was some other traffic coming by when two ambulance are parked there, again, there is free movement. Fire lane.
What's happened with the MRI service? Could it be placed somewhere else or?
Yeah, I don't know, depending on that. Current, there is a, a hookup for the MRI at the back of the building. That was used previously, that will be, for at least for the temporary location of that MRI. Up at the, at that parking lot, the physician's lot at the back of the hospital, so at least temporarily it will be there and then. And, but this will be maintained at, at the existing site so they can move back after.
I'm going to continue on layout, I'm going to just go to utilities here and a couple more elements, but quickly on layout. Another important change here is we're going to provide a landscape island to separate this area, the parking for the medical office building and this parking lot. Previous year will come in here, drive straight at the front entrance and the drop off went like this. This is problematic when we came up with the drop, drug handle, we have traffic coming at each other, who's got the right of ways, so to speak. So by separating this, we identified a couple things, first of all, we identified you're going to enter the parking lot here or there and be able to make any decision, you can access anywhere in here from either of the two directions. You can also lead by those two directions, back out the poplar or back out Somerset. And then finally, this calls, this area can probably slows traffic down a bit. And if somebody's coming in and they're maybe in a hurry, they're here and they're here before they turn into the lot, whereas here they were going through that parking lot. We're also able to restore a couple parking spaces that we lost by the addition in this area by making that more far. We provide a pedestrian court of connection, this is a crosswalk and the spaces comes across here and goes to their front door. We've also got a sidewalk along this portion along from addition. And we also provide a sidewalk from down here from the office building entrance, coming up along that new two day, uh, two-way drive, excuse me, crosses the jug handle, comes here and goes to their front. So we have good pedestrian access between other parking areas, we also have a number of staff that walk for exercise etcetera, we want to maintain that pedestrian route, not have the little dry lines. They have seen the paint, feet on the pavement, but we've given them that on a curved sidewalk building. Things that have not changed is this parking lot back here is unaltered. These office buildings back here are altered. The service area is generally unaltered, although we've moved the new oxygen tank. You may recall the oxygen tank is up in this area here, it did not work for setbacks with the new ambulance drop off of the building addition. So after a lot of evaluation, we've moved it here to the back and showed a, a pad for loading this, the apartments that the oxygen company have, the tank itself is secured in a fence. Got all the fixtures inside of a concrete pad and we've actually got a semi truck here, this has a symbol that shows that in the event you ever had to come in and do temporary or emergency or fill the tank, the semi can fit and it doesn't alter the dry lot that people get around and still. And that's when the truck can, the truck can make this move out, come out poplar and get out of the site. The hospital utilities will be unchanged by the project. The size of the water service is adequate to support changes inside the addition. Sufficiency to support the sprinkler system and also the change of fixtures inside. Sewer system is also a suicide, it's also a large amount of discharge. So the plans that have the utilities for this come off the existing building that also include electrical and telephone. The project itself does not add new patient rooms, nor is intended to add new staff. It's an reorganization to improve the efficiency provided for treatment and emergency growth, but it's not at the end of the day altering. By looking at these, what the water flows of the hospital are. So consider that there isn't a change in flow based on the structure here, we have not altered who's in the building, we've just altered where they are and how they're operated. Also where the TOMs had some conversations with these utility districts and they understand that arrangement and they understand that if there are any changes to the water flow, it will be minor, we're not adding features.
Okay, need a boost for fire protection, anything like that?
No, our cat lens here is, our design is adequate, uh, by, by tapping off there. Archie, one more time. No, it's not, it'll be unchanged, I believe it's beside the door here. Is that right?
The door of the basement, thanks.
So in this part of the yard, there's, there's no improvements or any changes to that part of the yard. Two hydrants with the addition, there's really no difference in the service of the existing hydrants to the building, there is more building area there, but your approaches, your connections, your distances to hydrants are. This plan also shows some landscaping, I'm going to zoom in now, next slide. Give you the whole picture and I shall step back before that and say here is in a larger scale, we'll put the big picture, now you can get the full effect, this plan is dimension. Twenty four feet here, parking spaces with dimension at nine by eighteen. Drive aisles meet the town ordinance requirements. And again, this will be the main entrance here, the alcohol, where, double doors, this is covered. Here, here. The intention is to have cars along this curb and to stop here, here maybe, and maybe a third one as well depending on the size of the vehicle, what's going on, that's not a lot of drop off at the same time, there's a lot of real estate there. And then this is the second lane that's meant to go by. They come together into a single lane just to keep everybody controlled and nobody's passing each other at this point, it's a stop sign here and then the cars can make a move this way or this way to leave the site or to park along there. There were eighty nine parking spaces in the front parking lot in the existing conditions, we now have eighty spaces in this area. The conversation with hospital staff, they feel that is still adequate to meet the outpatient visitors, guests. Parking and staff around the first part of the other lot anyhow. We have a total of one hundred thirty nine. A hundred thirty parking spaces on the site that does not include two office buildings.
Who's it?
It does, uh, Jerry, we have one, two, three, four spaces here for this eighty space lot. So that's, that is, that's the correct standard for a hundred and four percent and then there's two ADA spaces down here in this lot that are unchanged, so the total is six on the site for one hundred thirty nine and that is also correct. While these will be banned at choir, that's it right there for order. Grange patterns are relatively unchanged, I've got a grading plan, I'll show that quickly, show that's working. We have some opportunities to green spaces up, to be fair, the previous parking lot is a pavement. And find balance between keeping pavement, restoring it and putting some aesthetics into there, so what we've done is, uh, we've been able to put a curved island here, we've been able to landscape around the sidewalk here, then actually green this up around the jug handle. Got an island here that will green this up as well, then I'm going to put a couple bushes along the front of this sidewalk, this is the planting area from the building. And then we're going to breathe this area as well, some trees and try to extend this tree line to kind of put to some more of a, more natural effect coming between the two lots. So you'll have a visual high and low that you don't drive through anymore and it's also greater. We've also added, and these are conifer or evergreen symbols, these trees here are provided in a stagger pattern to provide screening from this property line to the new dry aisle and the building. Previous to that dry aisle roughly right up here, we, we have moved that dry aisle about ten feet towards that property line. We spoke with the setbacks and we provide that screening as a softener, the mitigation, recognizing that that's the case. I'll get to this on the course of that moment, that slide for that. I also like to point out, people, I think you'll appreciate this, um, it's a little busy in this corner, but this is a decon, the sidewalk goes into a decon room here inside the ED. And in fact, we'll speak more to the traffic pattern, we now have a dedicated situation work, but EMT enters, is this situation where I need to. Decon, do some kind of change or something, we have a room dedicated for that here, there's going to be a holding tank just outside, thousand gallons of holding tank with no exit. So it is just like a holding tank, a subject system with no treatment field. When necessary, they'll pump that out and have that properly stored, properly addressed and treated. So that is, again, I want to be clear, it's not part of the sewer system, it's a holding tank only, there are specials, uh, symbols, uh, the door and also pavement to indicate that it is a biohazard room and they'll just be entering there and say.
That will also equip the high roll level on.
Does, this is does. Just about run out of layout, here I'm going to go reading in a second, Elvis pointed, we've got stop signs here, along stop bars here and here, just as ever people are leaving the site, this is the application of the stop and yield to emulses, which they should be anyhow polite drawn. And also down here, this intersection is not the best to begin with, but we identify that if you're coming down like this, we should stop and wait and everybody else has the right of way as you're leaving, no one should be leaving in a hurry, so to speak. And everybody else has the right of way as you're leaving. No one should be leaving in a hurry, so to speak. Next slide please. Thank you for your patience. I appreciate being able to work through all these details. This is a zoning table for the N C zone. Uh, you have criteria over here on this column. Here is the requirement for the criteria. Here are the existing conditions. And here's opposed changes. And with the addition being in the center of the lot next to the building, there really is no impact to operation to the present geometry or setbacks. In fact, if anything, by moving the O T tank, O T tank, we're actually a foot further away than we were from the existing conditions. The lot coverage is for building specifically, excuse me. You can see we're adding just under two percent areas to the building for a total of ten and a quarter for the site, but the standard is sixty percent. The maximum building height is thirty-eight. We have seventeen-six at the existing connection. And we're going to have twenty-two feet six on that portico over the main entrance problem. So it's still below the matchable building height. Again, Becca's got some graphics that will show you what that will look like in perspective. Uh, we've been sensitive to have the building addition itself blend into the hospital. It was not an intention here to make an architectural statement everywhere, that the building be consistent with the rest of the building. And then yes, there is some architectural floors at the entrance inside the building to, to make this attractive, but we're not trying to create a high new entrance here. That's not the point. We've made it just high enough to allow we have a lot of weather recovery. And here's the parking, as I said, this is the outwardness requirement, which this is actually relatively modest in terms of the number of spaces for, for, for the hospital. They have one hundred thirty-nine now around the hospital building and we lost nine with the building addition. And while the staff are comfortable with that number, that is adequate for their accomplish. But. Yeah, I'll finish up, uh, one more back please. Uh, appreciate your patience explaining the site. I will just, uh, take a little time. This is the grading plan that's in your packets, C G one oh one. The heavy dark lines are opposed contours. The lighter lines, which are not really visible in this view are existing conditions. However, I want to just reiterate that the general drainage patterns are not changed. Right now, this area of the site is drained by a storm rain down on Somerset Street. There's a structure here, there's a structure here. There's catch basin here by the building and one over by the front door now by the flag wash. There's two over there, five actually over here, excuse me. We've also got roof drains coming out into that system and going here, here, Somerset and down to the Monarch Stream. In the proposed condition, we are still using this structure. We're going to relocate that catch basin to a more advantageous location. And then we've got the catch basins here, here, and one by the front door just to collect there. All those go into a storm drain system back down to this point. And then again, same discharges here and coming down here. The change in previous area is essentially no effect. By putting the building into a paved area and adding more green space, there's essentially the same amount of pervas here for an after. So there really is no impact to drainage, no impact to drainage patterns. We did have a situation where we're getting out to close to the building here, you can see some contours. And we're going to need to put a relatively smaller tanning wall right above there. You may be familiar with an existing concrete one that's right there at the moment. We're going to pull that one out and put a new one in here that'll support the jug handle more properly. It will be hand rail along that right all the way along here until we get past three to one side slopes. And also along this area as well, down by the sidewalk. It, it actually is pretty shallow. I think the wall's about four to five, four to five feet total. So I'm five ten, the wall is here and we're able to taper it out and go away. So, uh, it is not a large tanning wall. It is not some large structure. It is just, we could not find a way to grade this, make the layout work and not get closer to that building corner. We want to maintain the space that Chief has now to move vehicles in there if they had to, or the hospital. And that's the rating. I would like to add, Becca and Alan discussed the building. The rest of the come on here. Sir, we know John's ready to serve that. Or the way they get to, yeah, okay, that's on.
Either way.
Just because the ambulance, you get it quick.
So as we are, if I get to start with pretty pictures. Um, so this is a, um, a rendering on a view. Totally rendered to every little detail, but, uh, over here on the right, this view is if you were coming up towards that jug handle on the plans that we were just looking at and looking towards the entrance, right? So say you just come up from Somerset Street, here's that jug handle coming around on the right. Vehicles, uh, this brick wall here is the existing hospital. And what you see this corner, that corner is there is about where the existing waiting room is now. And so that's where we're connecting, that same spot. And it comes out and then this larger mass in this, you have mentioned about the heights. The idea was, let's make it so you can, you know, you know right where you're going. There's no question. It is a little bit higher to get that, that volume there. So you see that main entrance. There's, this is the waiting room, that primary lobby. Large, uh, granite section of wall there is kind of the landmark. The logo on it so you know kind of where you're headed. This is that, um, canopy over the drive aisle, both this and the canopy. Ambulance drop off are forty. Just over. So this, again, the point that we've got this parking gets nice and close to the door and again with the drop off underneath. And what he hears, there's a sort of canopy coming out over to the front door that overlaps. And once, so that is the, there's a single entrance for everybody so that you don't figure out where to go when you're outside. But then once we get inside, you will take a right, main hospital and then what? You've got to do those doors in that vestibule. What will be in front of you, you'll have signage, emergency department, red, main hospital. At the right, there are also, um, the plan. And so this is that floor plan. Been looking at it on the site for a while now. But so this is correct, that jug handle here. Uh, those four squares are the, uh, problems in the post for that canopy. So here's that vestibule as you come in. Just, um, the colors are kind of stopped here, but you can mostly see the green, green are these staff only areas. So what you have here is a central staff only area. So this, this checking staff that are overseeing that entry and the checking staff here for the emergency room. And then these both have a window down through the right point as well as this. So, um, a couple of things before I jump into the, the emergency room. Then I just to kind of walk you through a little bit here, if you were to come in, this main waiting area to the main hospital, you check in. This has been large, so again, um, my thunder adjustment is we've got a lot more space there for, um, distance separation for HIPAA. And, uh, so people are sitting for one side, the tech is over here. There are also things, the connection is passed up, here's the main right across the top of the page. That's the main corridor that works for the hospital. That is at that same point. But as you're here, a couple of things just to mention for the, the public amenities. At the intersection of kind of the public zone and the emergency room here is, uh, console room, family kind of space so that we could have now some place that people can go to have those private conversations for their very the staff or a break out of the public area or out for those. Um, that's something important that's required and then is along with this list of items that we're trying to bring into this emergency here that are either regulatory or part in all of this practice. Uh, another, so another amenities for the public here, there is in addition to existing toilet rooms that are, um, from the corner of the main corridor. We've added a family toilet room there, um, some wheelchair storage, drinking fountain. And all pillars, as well as a couple of these three yellow boxes there are for flexible spaces that could allow for future needs by the hospital, but also allow for, you know, if somebody's got small children, they want to get them out of the big area or they're upset or they need a private hotel or go for a first walk on time required now. Take care of it. Then as you, if we turn the other way here, this is the waiting room for emergency department. Uh, this base here with the door, um, on the, the south face there, that's the, um, the decontamination phase. So it is that it can be accessed if somebody comes into the emergency department waiting room. They can be whisked off this way if there is a patient or they need decontamination. Again, if you know they're coming, they're, then bring them in directly from outside. Or it also can be accessed, uh, if somebody comes in from ambulance and, um, access that place. And also we have it tied into, uh, sort of a dirty and a clean side so that the required contamination can happen there. Um, there's, and then serve as an answer room for that as well as directly adjacent to that as a care package. But these are against the things that the staff don't have. Other spaces in the emergency department, you know, we're replicating but to today's standards with, with more space, uh, more privacy, et cetera, for trauma based, currently there are two, uh, trauma based in one room. We have two old trauma rooms, um, with an interconnection there that are sized to today's standards. Have cardiac room, again, slightly larger to accommodate our equipment that, that is needed today. But this is huge. Why there's additional space needed also, so, um, there are more areas, especially in that for collapsed hospitals like this. That have to take care of any potential situation that could come, right? And there's no place if somebody needs to have a baby, they need to have a baby, you know, and so there may be piece of equipment. They need to be on hand and sterile and, you know. Um, we greatly increase the amount of, uh, sort of space and put it in the right place. So in addition to those, replicating those spaces, there are also, uh, there are two exam rooms today. We're doubling that, have four exam rooms. This first one, um, talk a lot about flexibility right now, just probably most basically have both this and serve as three eyes of constantly waiting room, but also these other exam rooms also, um, have the ability of in addition to those, another, um, issue that probably everybody is so familiar with is the, the demand for services for, for medical, behavioral health and such. And so what, um, again, something that's commercial departments were not outfitted for in the past. And so what you see here is, um, not a separate area. This is still supervised by a direct line of sight from the nurse station. But we have two quiet holding rooms that are, um, for behavioral health patients and then two additional exam rooms that we call a flex behavioral exam room. So those are, um, hardened and safe and all of the things can be shut down, you know, behind a holding door so that they are hardened and so what we've done here is to create a quieter zone that's still part of the E D, but out of the, the busy core of clinical area. And that also is a, a toilet room with a shower so that the event, the event doesn't need to stay there. So, uh, that's a lot about what's happening in that zone. One last place I'd really like to point out, because this is something really, um, forward thinking of the hospital here is this large room at the top of the plan. It's for a mass casualty space. And again, a mass casualty. As you can imagine, you know, could be another pandemic, could be, you know, uh, an incident, incident or something with, with Boris. You don't, you don't know what would happen, but so there's a capacity here for seven, um, stretchers to head walls and mid gas, et cetera. This room can be again, flip it a little switch, turn to, uh, negative pressure. And also, we hope that it never is needed or, um, very, very rarely is needed. And so understanding how valuable this work footage is and the face that we're using. This area is considered both a mass casualty and also meets requirements for what is called a low activity space. And so what that means is, you know, on any given day, if you don't have a mass casualty event, you can use this as a low activity space. So say, for example, you know, somebody's, uh, waiting to be discharged, but, but that was very busy or you're just waiting for test results or that sort of thing. Something that you don't really need to be in a full, uh, clinical exam room or, um, care space. And, um, have a spread, have a recliner or something here with a staff person to support that. So and in that low base could freeze up some of more, um, that's a lot. Hope you understand. I wanted to just highlight so many of the things that the care that the staff are
Let's take just a couple more minutes and wrap up here. Just give me a time of very patient. Appreciate that. A couple of, I really want to clarify that insider application, I want to state the public appearance. Parking itself does not represent any impacts in natural resources. The development is all within an area that was previously developed, plenty of natural characters previously been removed. And so we are into one of the back of the slides of the site, site plan. I want to get there in a second. That'll work for the moment. All the development area in that area was replacing lawn or pavement or modifying previous buildings. So there is no representing. Uh, as such, we better state the E P for there was any other permitting requirements for more or so. Hopefully build a slow certification bill on that and also nerf on the weapons. In a pre-application, you'll be, they confirmed that did not trigger any of those permits since that requirement. And then lastly, one permit would require from the state, it's called a main construction general permit. Essentially in a road control permit that is similar to a perma fire rule. The plants they have in front of you has road control notes, details and the features as well, the grading plan, all of which will be the standard of the main general concern permit. Will be applied for that. Like lighting, I mentioned that the lot was previously lit with a couple lights. We have to apply a higher standard. Do please go ahead, uh, slides and take us to the last one. And this is a book candle plan and in my years of experience in front of playing boards, it is so difficult to show a plan that's got the little numbers over the book candle. So I want to be candid with you to say, I have to zoom in and show you what those numbers are. But your standard here in Monarch it has that point one book candles at the property. And that's pretty small. Actually, you, proportionally, if you got in the middle of the night, you had about point three or four book candles. You could find your way into another room, you know, walking around the dark. So it's almost zero, not quite. That heavy orange line starting up here on the edge of the addition, coming around, wrapping down here along the property line. Comes around like this, comes along the face of the, of the, uh, office building. Comes over here, comes around, again, runs along this tree line, meets the meets the property corner right there, turns, comes over and ties back into the building. This is the area, point one foot candles or greater, and also I'll point out that we have forests or woods here, here. Those two areas have woods, and we did not include that in analysis, we just pretended the woods weren't there, we didn't account for them. So, uh, there are six lights, there are the dark blue ones here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, giving us some account there. Also, the canopy has direct lights twelve underneath cans, but direct down, and also the ambulance canopy will also have light fixtures down. All of these light fixtures in order to accommodate that point one foot candles are a dark sky fixture. They point down, they're all similar as cutoffs, and not a commercial lighting, but a gas station, you're blind, you're walking in there. These are all directional and will provide adequate walking, uh, twenty-four seven, the walking visibility, the safety on the car. I'm going to wrap up right now, and just in summary, say, I trust you can recognize that this is an important reinvestment in the hospital, uh, for the community, for the business. Hospital is very excited about this opportunity, they have done this for a long time, a lot of moving pieces, and a lot of work's gone into where we've come today. Like your money, the project meets the donor, the donor does not represent an impact to the suburbs or the environment, and also represents a circulation pattern that is consistent with the practice, standards, and your order. Becca, Bob and I are just getting ready to answer any questions or address any concerns you have. Well, thank you for your time and attention, I'll phone you later, see you.
I uh, I do have a couple. The construction laydown area, are you guys going to be able to use the no site, or are you going to be able to add adequate area right from the new construction area there?
Mike, I'd like to add that we have a construction manager on board, it is AZ Chimbro, the new variant, the Chimbro corporation. They're working on that just to expand now, we did not have a formal approval for it, for you to show you. However, I just, I've seen the draft, what they plan to do is be able to accommodate everything on site and dedicate signed areas for ED parking here, ED entry there, ED parking here, ED parking there. And there'll be a construction fence around the work area, screening, dust, noise, visibility, et cetera. And do not tend to use off-site areas for the layout, this should be a problem. Uh, there is going to be an impact to the hospital, and Bob and staff are in work with AZ to keep operations going. Uh, we got a construction manager partner because clearly, this is an occupied reputation, and we've got to keep all functioning.
We walked through with AZ last week. And there's a fenced off area where the equipment can be stored, and patients and visitors would park outside that fence. So they're doing everything within the fence, it's a self-contained area. So we're, we operate ER right now where it is, with a temporary access. And then when the new building's built, we move the ER operation into the new building to renovate the whole part of ER. So there should be no interruption at all for patient care, and only a minor interruption for getting into
schedule whatever they need to do project.
That's right, that's right. A lean approach, which is kind of the way this is working today, is you, you schedule your materials, so you don't get everything all much. You have them coming, you need the over the impact of the user, especially on occupied building, and also today's supply chain. It makes more sense that if it's coming in a smaller doses of regular schedule, rather than planning out one, because you can't count.
Who else got
I looked at the dress that specifically, there is, there's no impact to that, that site. Uh, the alterations to the front entrance shouldn't change or play patterns, because the antennas of the building are higher than the potential for both, for example. And then the access down to the EP areas.
Um, so good, uh, during construction, they're at the temp, they're going to use that side door for temporary entrance. Um, and so they'll be putting a ramp on there, et cetera, during, for that. So there will be a ramp, and actually, in the final, we're adding a ramp to that also, so that it's an accessible exit from the building. Um, and then, long-term, yes, the, the access will be through the um, similar to how it is now through the ambulance. They'll come down the ramp, yes, and into the new door. It's just a little, it's just about twenty-five thirty feet from where it is today.
Yeah, the, the, the features that are extending from the roof on the building now are higher than the new addition at point. There'll be no impact, no impact, higher than already is, but they their flight has changed, but.
Well, Mike, I just uh like to make a comment, like my family just had to use the emergency room the last couple of years, uh, several occasions, and a couple of times, then uh, this year. Uh, I am extremely pleased with what Bob has worked, yeah. I want to thank it, Tom, for the present over you've provided us. I went through that, I went through our strike criteria. I don't see any conflict, though. I'm wanting to fully support this. I had exchange of letters with our congresspeople wish financial help, which we got. I'm anxious to see it. Get started. Wonderful.
I have a second for those comments, you know, this project is to ensure that high-quality medical services are available to the target region for the next twenty to thirty years. We haven't done any additions on that building since the nineties, nothing. So this is a, this is a huge step for us, and there's many hospitals that are proposing across the country uh, coming out of COVID, and we decided to do it, do this differently, we need to invest in our healthcare services. We need to make sure they're here for future generations, and there's a defined impact on economic development is that any business or any family that wants to move to this area is going to look for certain things that, that need to be present. Healthcare being one, school systems, things to do, libraries. Um, we need all of that, infrastructure for, for fire protection and EMS. Uh, why move to a community that doesn't have these, these pillars of services? Without that hospital, economic development slows, and the people just not getting that. So while many people are shrinking, and many hospitals are, are, I call it turd, bumping their head and trying to weather this. Um, we decided to be aggressive and actually invest in healthcare for this region. And without that, it wouldn't be true.
I congratulate you for doing that, and I want to just support what you just said. My job was great, not, and one of my functions. I was very involved with any hiring, any new employees. And I had to take them on tours of this town, and they obviously they were very interested in our school system. And we had this hospital. I just support.
It also has a recruitment and retention factor that I think that needs to be taken into account. Is that when we're trying to recruit young doctors, young technical staff, um, young advanced practitioners, they need to see a facility that's been invested in, that is modernized, that looks nice, and they can see themselves working there and existing there for the next ten to twenty years. And when you have a building that is seventies vintage, vintage, with, with one nineteen nineties addition, um, it makes recruitment a little bit difficult. And, you know, you've got to have a place where they say, I want to work there, I want to practice there, and I, I'll be comfortable. And it's a, it's a hard sell when you're trying to instant stay for anywhere from ten to fifteen years in an old facility. So this is uh, this is huge, and for retention is that, once, once you're working in a modernized area, is that it's a nice place to work, and you want to continue. Rest falls in place, there's, there's many factors to investing in infrastructure. And I think that we've thought this through, and I think that the services that we're able to deliver, we're able to grow, we're talented growth, because we have a little bit more space, and we're able to accommodate the equipment necessary to provide high-quality trauma care, stroke care, or all parts.
That's funny. Yeah, I'll also put that to average of that. I think it's an important, very important investment in our community. Uh, everything was done, death, kudos. It was great, I mean, it was paid easy, it goes through the application. Everything was, stuff felt pretty well, you know, the parking issues, everything, uh, the site plan. We're great, the race brought on, I love the presentation, it was great. He did a really good job of it, and it's limited my questions to very few, and I'm sure everybody's uh, because it was all pretty much answered with the package he provided, and what we have to build, and so, as we go through the checklist. Very easy. Thank you. Bob, you got anything?
I'll make sure.
The vast majority of this construction is covered by CBS grants, directionally delegated spending. We see two of those even if you supported by Senator Spalding. Uh, that's huge, a small hospital, a small rural critical access hospital, not a deep buy, doesn't let be down. The only way that this is possible is funded by, by grants and outside funding. It is particularly hard one that we're, we're able to move this community, move services we provide, and not take a ton of money. If I allow that hospital to get, it's, it's a new, uh, but the genius with grant books is huge. So it's really, really something, we do all, I get a gratitude, so. They've, they've invested in our community, they've got our finances on.
I'll work.
My name is Todd. Um, I'm having questions per se, but I'm wondering how much uh, fire chief, uh, lease chief, public works director, uh, make order, and the waste water treatment plant is involved in this, that they there, what's being done, and I'm second guessing, but just uh, making sure that what is the process being pulled is doable. You know, what are my, uh, what are the lines that are adequate then?
We can, we can, uh, we can certainly address that already, I can get what you have, we did it, just prior to you coming in here. No, no, that's great, it's, it's a, it's a great question, and it's, it's certainly a, you know, a good one, because it's a, it's a major concern, and yeah, everything that they have, um, is all inadequate, and uh, it's all been verified and checked, and we're ready to roll. You're welcome. Anything for the public? Uh, we have any abiding landowners here?
I have spoken to the courses. The residential. I bought one of the entire project with it, and it was a very important.
The onsite engineer? Who is the uh onsite Chimbro facilitator or project manager?
One, it's a totally art. I think this is, he's more John, this is the second. We hit the top three, they did those three, they're very, very, uh, into this project. That's great. The only reason I ask is to like this, I worked at the twenty-one years as a consultant. A lot of the guys, so, yeah, I, and so these are all great, great people, so.
Peter, you have any?
Yes, sir. Sure, yes, well. My components, before I sure, for motion. For second.
I have my I like to, I know that the the planning board has reviewed the site criteria for the Molokot Regional Hospital's expansion project. We've reviewed it against the site criteria, and moved it to, to go forward with the cost of utilization.
Owen, fair.
So very happy. Good to see you, Bob. Happy to be here, happy to go. Appreciate that, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so I'm happy.
Perfect. Happy to see you. Really happy to see you. Tell her that's awesome. Yeah, lots of doing during, I'm sorry. Uh.